Welcome to the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. If you're here tonight to offer testimony during this evening's public hearing on the forest conversion ordinance, an opportunity will be provided during that hearing. My name is Eric Casino. I'm the season's chair residing District Two. We'll start our introductions of the other planning commissioners here in the board and then move on to our online commission. We'll start down here with Commissioner Halverson.
Barry Halverson.
Derek Day, District One.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Kevin Pestinger, District One.
Helen Wheatley, District One.
And do we have anybody online from the commission? All right. Well, we do have a forum, so we'll move forward. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to look over the agenda, and if so, I entertain a motion.
So moved second.
Been moved in second to accept the agenda. All those in favor of call for the vote.
Commissioner Halverson.
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Pessinger.
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Vice Chair Day.
Hi.
Chair Casino.
Hi. That motion passes. We missed Commissioner Simmons.
Oh, Commissioner Simmons, I apologize.
No worries. All right, the agenda has been accepted. Has everybody had an opportunity to look over the meeting minutes from August second, twenty twenty-three's Planning Commission meeting? And if so, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Been moved to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record of our August second, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Halverson.
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
All right.
Commissioner Pessinger.
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Vice Chair Day.
Hi.
Chair Casino.
Hi. Those meeting minutes have been approved. With that, we'll move on to our public communications portion of the evening. And again, if you're here to offer testimony on our forest conversion ordinance, we'll take that public testimony during that public hearing. But if there's somebody here that's would like to offer testimony on a subject other than that, we'd welcome you now. Is there anybody online that would like to offer public testimony? Well, I'm not seeing any public testimony tonight for that, but we do have, I would like to invite the Director of Community Planning Economic Development, Joshua Cummings up to address the board.
Well, Planning Commission, I am Joshua Cummings, the Director of CPED, Community Planning and Economic Development. First off, I want to start this evening with gratitude for the Planning Commission. It's hot outside. It's fun. Summer is still here for a little bit. I just enjoyed a little bit with my son. We did a little slip inside, slip and slide session. But wanted to make the time to come here and thank you for your work. I know that this volunteer opportunity can be a lot of reading and paying attention to some really important issues in our community, and I really just appreciate the work and the time that you put into it. Over the past couple of weeks, almost a month and a half or so, we have been going through a process of ensuring that we've got the right person in the right position for the community planning manager. It's an integral position that keeps the trains running, that makes sure that the items that are concerned to the Board of County Commissioners are then brought forward to the Planning Commission for your review and recommendation. And really to have that person able to synthesize and bring all that information to you in a way that is discernible and able for you to provide a recommendation is important to us as staff. We took our time making sure that we had the right person in the right position. We had a number of candidates apply, but one quickly rose to the top in the pool. And we are happy to say that it was an internal candidate. And tonight, at her first day on the job in the community planning manager role, is Ashley Arron. So congratulations, Ashley. One of the things that we have learned about Ashley being an internal candidate over the past couple of, I guess it's been a year or so now that you've been on board, is that our job as staff is to make sure that the community is engaged in the process. And what could have been a pretty difficult topic in terms of the ag issues over the past year could have gone in lots of different directions. And what we saw from Ashley was a coordinated approach that was a big tent that brought folks in from all of the different sectors that were interested in the land use of agriculture in our community. And while nobody got everything they wanted in terms of the recommendation that came to the Planning Commission, everybody had something and a voice at the table. And that's what's really important to us as public servants is to ensure that there are voices allowed to be presented to the Planning Commission and therefore the Board of County Commissioners. And Ashley has done a great job of that. And so she, I know, will continue to do that in her specific projects, but also lead our team as a demonstration of that model of ensuring that all voices are heard and the topics that are brought to this commission. So again, I wanted to say thank you to the Planning Commission, take this opportunity to say thank you to Ashley, and also to the entire staff at Community Planning and Economic Development in the Community Planning Division. We've got lots of topics that are big in their community. We've, I think, cut our teeth on a few really important ones these past couple of years. But as the comprehensive plan comes up in the coming year, I just think that we've exercised those muscles and I look forward to taking it to the next level and know that Ashley's gonna get us there. So thank you for your time. Are you any questions?
Anybody got anything for the Director?
I just have one thing, not specifically for, for Commissioner Deputy. Or Director Cummings, but I had a note I was gonna do it during Good of the Order, but what you just said, I'll say it right now. The public outreach, the research and the answers that were provided to us by the questions the commissioners had on the long-term agricultural zoning. And the fact that I think we had more work sessions on that than we did for any other subject except for maybe the SMP over the last year and a half. And Ashley and Maya were the leaders on that. And I just wanted to thank them because I think it brought us, even though we were very divided on the subject, it brought us together so that we had a consensus for a vote for a platform to send to the Board of County Commissioners. And that was, I knew that was a difficult task and it happened.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it.
Second.
Does anybody else have any questions of the Director? Thanks for coming in. We appreciate you taking time.
We're gonna stick around for just a little bit longer. My son enjoys the civics lesson.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, next up, we'll move on to some new business, which is our first work session for CPA for the Capital Improvement Project. And Andrew Bond will be taking lead on this one.
Yes, I am. So we are having two technical issues with some people joining in, so we're in the background trying to solve that as we speak. But let me go ahead and start my presentation. What I plan on doing, I reported that stuff to Tosh to hopefully get sorted out. And at the end, I will have introductions of all the staff who are present for the meeting so that they are there to answer any questions you might have. So let me just go ahead and share my screen. Again, Andrew Bond with Community Planning. Today's work session is on the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine Capital Improvement Program. This is an annual presentation that we have every year to discuss the Capital Improvement Program for the next six years. So today I'm going to provide an overview of what the Capital Improvement Program is, provide some regulatory background, dive into some of the different departments and divisions, kind of touch on some major projects that are coming down, how they establish their project funding and so on. So the Capital Improvement Program is a requirement under the Growth Management Act, which requires counties to maintain a capital facilities element in their comprehensive plan. The capital facilities element must include public facilities that are needed to support the growth and development of Thurston County, policies to ensure coordination and consistency among capital facility planning throughout the county for the next twenty years, level of service defined for facilities, and that's kind of acres apart per person, lengths versus number vehicles, so on. And a six-year financial plan showing the funding sources and expected cost of each of those facilities. Again, it's a six-year financial plan, obviously, capital improvement program or within our conference plan, it's appendix G. The appendix G looks over the next six years. So this year, we're looking at twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine. If you remember last year at this time, we did twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight. So we're doing this every year, is updated annually and is consistent with the county budget, but it is not a county budget. It is just a planning document that highlights simultaneously with the county budget, future projects and financial expenditures, and helps identify those funding sources. So Thurston County's capital facility planning effort is kind of a big bubble, you could say. And CPED is the primary coordinator of those groups. We have public works and facilities that are the primary contributors to the document. You'll see a lot of the projects are related to facilities or public works. And then our budget and Budget Office ensures that the financials and the projects line up, that we have the necessary expenditures and financials teed up. And then finally, schools and fire districts, and I'll go into a little more detail at the end about how they play a role within our CIP document. So what is a capital facility? RCW specifies a minimum for capital facilities, and each jurisdiction is kind of left up to define what a capital facility is for them to meet and support the growth of their jurisdiction. Projects that are included with REIT funds or impact fees must be included within the capital improvement program.
Except both types of REIT funds.
Yeah. For the capital facility, for the CIP, we don't really distinguish between the two, just REIT. Thurston County defines capital facilities as transportation systems, water systems, sanitary sewer, stormwater, solid waste, parks and trails and county buildings. And external agencies included within our capital improvement program include the public utility districts, the school districts, and the fire protection districts as a reference. So what is the role of the Planning Commission? Staff provides a high-level overview of a high-level overview of the proposed capital improvement program. We are here to answer any questions that you might have on projects within the capital improvement program. The Planning Commission is to hold a public hearing and accept public comment, and finally make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So now I'm going to dive into an overview of each of the specific departments slash divisions of Public Works and facilities for Thurston County. The Parks and Parks and Trails help design established projects that designed to complete required infrastructure, repairs, add capacity to existing facilities and reduce required maintenance costs. Those projects are selected based on the system needs, citizens' input through public outreach and funding availability and professional judgments. Those funding sources include REIT funding, impact fees, grant and federal appropriations and conservation futures. Over the next six years, it is anticipated to spend eighteen point nine million dollars. Some upcoming major projects for the Parks and Recreation is the Yell Rainier Minor Trail Extension at Crowder Road and the Gate Belmore Trail at Glacier Heritage. The Solid Waste Division's goal is to design and provide efficient, reliable and affordable solid waste collection, handling, recycling and disposal services. Their projects are selected on what will improve public and employee safety and security, address current and future operational needs and meet legal and regulatory requirements established by state or federal law. Their primary funding source is the Solid Waste Fund, and they anticipate spending over the next six years twenty-one point eight million dollars. Some of their upcoming major projects include the pump system upgrades and improvements, a possible South County transfer station, Rochester and Rainier Dropbox renovation, finally, so to. The stormwater utilities goal is to design to reduce localized flooding and improve water quality throughout Thurston County. Projects will also include capital replacements and for aged facilities that are at the end of their lifespan. Their projects are selected based on the state and federal requirements and reviewed by the Storm and Surface Water Advisory Board. Their primary funding sources are utility fees and grants, and they anticipate spending approximately ten million dollars over the next six years. Some of their major, major projects on the horizon are the Wood, Woodard, I always mess that up, Woodard Creek retrofit site four, the Meadow subdivision pond retrofit, and the Washington State Department of Transportation US one oh one Schneider Creek project. The water and sewer utilities designed to provide safe and reliable drinking water for their customers and preserve the environmental health of our community. They select their projects based on state and federal regulatory requirements and service demands by the community. Their primary funding sources include utility fees, REIT and the American Rescue Plan Act grant or ARPA. And they anticipate spending over the next six years around eighteen point two million dollars. Some of their upcoming projects include the Grand Mound Clarifier, project number two, rebuild and recoding, the Grand Mound wastewater class A reclamation, and the Tamishan water treatment assessment upgrade. And finally, for public works, the transportation projects, which are designed to provide safe and reliable transportation infrastructure. And those are selected by to meet safety, capacity, maintenance and state and federal requirements. They have a long list of funding sources, which I will not run through, but they primarily pull funds from the County Road Fund, the Transportation Improvement Fund, and a whole slew of federal grants and a few county utility funds. And they anticipate spending approximately nine ninety-five point nine million dollars over the next six years. Some of their major upcoming projects include the Marvin Road Upgrade Phase Two at the Mullen Run intersection. The Sean Drive Southeast Fish Passage at the unnamed preputary, the Thompson Creek Road Southeast Fish Passage, Pacific Avenue Southeast Pavement Preservation, the Young Highway Southeast Pavement Preservation, and numerous intersection improvements throughout the county. County facilities are designed to provide safe and sustainable public facilities to serve the public. Those projects are selected based on safety, health, accessibility, sustainability, operational efficiency and effectiveness of the facility. They again also have quite a few funding sources, but those include bond, REIT and central building reserve funds as well as a few other funds throughout the county as well as ARPA. They anticipate spending approximately one point two, one, one hundred and two point six million dollars over the next six years. Some of their major upcoming projects include multiple safety and security upgrades, infrastructure upgrades to avoid failures, expansion of the current ballot processing facility and countywide vehicle charging stations. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, for schools, fire districts and other utilities, not under the purview of Thurston County, those are going to be provided to us as reference at the end of the CIP as required by state law. And they themselves have their own specific CIP or capital facility planning process. And so they complete theirs and then provide a list to us to include in ours. And their funding sources range from impact fees, mitigation fees, bond levies, state funding and grants. So here's the anticipated process for this CIP. We had an informational work session with the Board of County Commissioners on July seventeenth. We're here today on August sixteenth for a work session. We anticipate if the Planning Commission is comfortable moving forward, having a public hearing on September twentieth, a work session with the Board of County Commissioners on October eighteenth, a public hearing on December fourth, and final action alignment with the county budget on December fifteenth. Here's the optional motion, which is included in your package. I'm available for any questions as well as some of county staff. And I'm just gonna go ahead and just yell out county staff names. And if you could just go ahead and introduce yourself and what department and division you work for. I'm just gonna go ahead and start with Tim Wilson since I'm muted.
Thanks, Andrew. Hello there, Planning Commission. Tim Wilson, Water Resources Division Manager with Public Works. I oversee the stormwater utilities, water sewer utilities. And for any questions that may come up tonight, two very capable senior water resource engineers are on to answer questions. That would be Nate Ensley fielding any stormwater related questions and Joe Plahuda fielding any water and sewer related questions.
Jeff Pickford.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Pickford. I am the Solid Waste Division Manager of Public Works. And basically, we oversee three solid waste sites here at the county, the Basin Recovery Center in Lacey, as well as smaller Dropbox sites in Rainier and Rochester.
Thank you, Jeff. Rick Thomas.
Good evening, Commissioners. Rick Thomas. I am the Capital Projects Planning Manager for Central Services.
Jason Nash.
Good evening. I'm Jason Nash, Facility Services Manager for Central Services.
Thank you, Jason. Ed Marson.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Ed Marson. I'm the Thurston County Parks Maintenance and Operations Manager.
Good. Teresa Parsons.
Hi, Teresa Parsons, Engineering Project Manager.
And Shannon Chula.
Hi, Shannon Chula, Strategic Planner, Public Works.
Thank you, Shannon. Then we also have Robin Campbell, Assistant County, County Manager with us as well. And we are now available for any questions. Like to open this up to the Planning Commission if they have any question for Andrew or any of the other staff.
Go ahead. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Andrew. A couple of questions about sea level rise. Are there any anticipated capital improvement projects related to that?
Was anyone on the call able to hear that question? Are there any capital projects included in the CIP related to sea level rise?
Andrew, I would weigh in on that from my perspective, water resources perspective and, and say no, not at this time via the stormwater utility at least.
This is Teresa Parsons. I'd like to, sorry, weigh in and just say that we don't have any that are specifically targeted a lot to that. But we do have at least one project that most definitely takes it into account. Our Country Club Road project will accommodate any sea level rise. And we are cognizant of that, what, as we design projects in the Public Works.
Thank you. Also.
Sorry. Could I just do a follow-up stormwater question in regard to climate mitigation? That's why I'm coming in. But I was wondering if in terms of funding, you know, I know that there's, there's a lot of, it seems like there's a lot of interest in kind of innovative stormwater system design these days. Are, are you looking at that as a possible source of funding for certain projects? Sort of newer, newer technology for stormwater systems, especially retrofitting urban stormwater? Maybe it doesn't apply to the county, but it might.
I can try to take that. This is Nate Ensley here, as to mention Senior Water Resources Engineer, and I try to shepherd along our stormwater capital projects. So just to clarify, the question that I heard on my end was, you know, what are we doing to plan for the storms of tomorrow with our infrastructure today, basically, whether that means via projects or pursuing funding? Is that accurate?
Well, especially the funding and new funding opportunities that might come from, you know, support for more innovative stormwater system design.
Yeah, so the, the team that I work within is routinely keeping an eye out for opportunities for funding, just like all of my other peers here on the call. As it relates to the impacts of climate change, one of the big things that I think of is, you know, larger rain events, which would equate to needing maybe not so much like newer technologies, just larger facilities to be able to accommodate those larger surges of volume of stormwater. And so we are trying to keep up with available opportunities, but we are at this time waiting to see what the folks at the state level release as far as direction on climate change accommodation.
So just one follow-up on that. So are you, I know that there's been, you know, some, some new legislation around capital facilities and climate mitigation where I guess for, it's mostly for UGAs, they need to look at green infrastructure and count it in the future as part of the facilities. And I'm just wondering for stormwater in particular, are you thinking at all about beginning to incorporate green infrastructure into your design? In other words, like trees, for example, and that kind of thing.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that question. So as far as incorporating trees into our projects, I would say traditionally, the county has gone with traditional BMPs. I'm sure you've heard of buyer attentions in the past. That's one of the most famous. Moving forward as far as to go with more naturalistic solutions, the utility planner, my team is evaluating what our avenues are there moving forward. Previous team members have looked into that. Leadership hasn't quite had the level of comfort with that because we're still trying to figure out the question of, you know, how many trees could replace, say, a pond or a buyer attention or something like that? And I'm not sure where the science is at this time. So we're trying to keep track of it, but at the local level with the county, we do a lot of looking to our peers at the state level with the Department of Ecology, because that's where a lot of the regulations come from that we have to follow.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sure, Pestinger, you have more?
Yeah, a few questions about the topic of fish passage enhancements. I noticed on page sixty-six, it lists rather generic sounding, open-ended, maybe. I can't tell what it is if it's, it's listed as eight million dollars expenses, starting twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, somewhere around that timeframe. And is this a study or is this to do some specific fish passage enhancements? Is there a project list associated with this particular item? I do see the next two items after that are related to fish, fish passage enhancements.
Just to confirm, you're referring to the fish, fish passage enhancement program?
Yeah.
Teresa?
Uh, yes, what we have created is a fish passage program. It's kind of the catch-all where we do preliminary review of potential projects. And once we've done some pre-design and, and alternative analysis and, and come up with a specific project in scope of work, we break it out and then create a specific project. And that's where you'll, where you see Sean Drive and Thompson, Thompson Creek and, and the like.
So the eight million for that particular item is just to study those and keep the list and prioritize and all that?
Uh, no, it also, it is used to build the projects as well. It's just, we put all the money in there and only break it out once we have the project defined and a scope of work and estimate. And then we move money out of the program and put it into that specific project. But that includes design and construction, so all, all phases of the project come out of that. We match it with grant money as we are able to get it on specific projects.
Like Robin wants to share.
Yes, thank you, Robin. Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager. The Board of County Commissioners a few years ago created the Fish Passage replacement program specifically to address culverts that are preventing fish runs. And at the time, they did not identify specific culverts that was left up to Public Works to bring priorities and ideas. And here's one that we really need to replace to the board as we go, but they wanted to earmark that money. And that's out of REIT two. And by the way, we do identify the difference between REIT one and REIT two as we must by law. But that is out of REIT two. So they've earmarked two million dollars a year, knowing that they want to continue to invest in the replacement of the culverts to enhance the fish runs.
Thank you both. I mentioned there's over three hundred potential locations across the county for this. Is there sort of like Robin was talking about prioritization? Is there a top ten or top twenty list?
What our staff has done is What our staff has done is created a spreadsheet that can be sorted in multiple different ways because there's different attributes to look at and different databases that we draw information from. One of our biggest tie-ins is to the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife Fish Barrier Database. But we also have identified all of our stream crossings, the conditions of our crossings and culverts. And so, we, we sort it several different ways, first based upon fish barrier and habitat enhancement. But if for some reason we need to look at something in addition, such as a condition of the crossing or if there's a grant source that's very specific, so we can sort it different ways. So in essence, it's, it's kind of a broad database and we don't just list the top fish barriers, if you will. We, we sort it depending on what we're looking for.
Perfect. That's really helpful. That was my last question actually about this topic. I believe Senator Deborah Leckinoff, six months ago, wrote an article in the Olympian talking about the state efforts and state funding and how they were often not remotely coordinated with local counties or municipalities. And I'm just curious, it sounds like you're coordinating with the state efforts. Is that correct?
We, we definitely tie into their databases. We have people and Shannon in particular has been active in sitting on the Water Resource Inventory Area groups that look, look at barriers in each of the watersheds. We have reached out and have a working relationship with the tribes and other like salmon recovery groups. So we do our best to stay plugged in to the entities and agencies that have an interest and have information in, in the watersheds.
Thank you. Commissioner Day?
I also know that the Thurston Regional Planning Council is doing a project right now to do transportation retrofit planning that uses the same framework as the state's program to look at both like stormwater impacts and fish passage issues in the same space.
Let me ask you, Derek, does that include, do you know, you know, I know that the whole issue of runoff from roads is becoming, you know, sort of the next big problem that's probably going to have to be solved. Does, is, do you know if TRPC is looking at that or is that on the radar?
And goals of that project was to incorporate both the fish passage and stormwater retrofit for salmon and into the same planning process.
Does anybody have any other questions for staff on CIP?
On page sixty-three, I'll go back from page sixty-six, because you answered one of my questions ahead. On page sixty-three, there's number six-one-five-six-six, which is the SR five-oh-seven and Vale Road Roundabout. From looking at the sheet, it looks like it's due to be completed in twenty-twenty-six. Is that correct?
At, at this time, that's an estimate. What has happened is, is that the legislature passed a bill to do a bit of a pilot project to turn over several roundabouts along SR five-oh-seven to local jurisdictions. That's Pierce County, Yelm, City of Yelm and Thurston County to see if our project delivery of those projects would, would work out better in these instances. We are in the process of discussing the scope of work and the total cost that might be associated with that. So it's a little bit up in the air. This was our best. Cut at it right now. There could be some changes as time goes on and we nail down some of the details.
As a representative on the Planning Commission for the south part of the county, southeast part of the county specifically, I've had a lot of questions from people out there in that area about the roundabouts because there, there's three of them within a three-mile area. As you just mentioned, there's one at McKenna, the one there on Vale and five-oh-seven, and then the one there at the Four Corners area. Are they all looking at being constructed and done about the same time? I know you can't speak for the city of Yelm and Pierce County, but that's really kind of an important hub there when you talk about movement of traffic, particularly with the I-five Niskuale Bridge project that we see coming down the road, but we don't have any further guidance on as to when that's going to happen.
I believe the legislature's desire was to have them all built at approximately the same time. But in such a new and different project delivery scenario, there's, there's a lot of details to work out. But the goal was to try to get them delivered around the same time. It's, it, it just came to light, particularly for the legislatures. My understanding that whenever there's an issue on I-five, and this is a main bypass, that it just clogs those streets and becomes a terrible nightmare to get through there. And so, so I know that that's what their desire is. It's just, as, as we're scrambling to try to figure out how to, how all of us are to, to deliver what, what was handed to us, we are still doing our best to plan and, and, and flex a little bit as things change and become more clarified.
Do you have any indication as to when they're looking at starting the I-five Niskuale Bridge project?
I really don't. I know this has been a huge priority for a lot of people, including the Niskuale Tribe. But I, I really don't. I think it's, it's a big enough project that it's a ways out.
Okay, because the concern is, is that, I mean, part of the reason we thought that they were going to do the roundabouts, we wanted to get those done before the I-five Niskuale Bridge project so that it would help some of the movement of, of the vehicles through that area when they bypass I-five. The other thing is, is the, the Yelm extension or what they call the loop bypass to Yelm. I don't know how much you're familiar with that. That was supposed to be started again this year by the state. That would be a big thing to get done before the I-five Niskuale Bridge project too.
Um, absolutely. I know that they're working on it because their consultant actually just reached out to us yesterday, their DOT's consultant regarding some city and county roads that will need to be improved in order to construct the bypass because they'll end up cutting off some of the, of the roads because they make it a limited access route. And so I don't know what the, the plan for construction is, but I know that they're pretty far along in the design.
Okay, I thought they had completed design and they were ready to execute. The only thing that was holding them up was the, the mosque, what do they call it, the gopher study?
You, you could be right. I don't know.
But let's get back to, if anybody has any more questions specifically about this CIP. And so that way, maybe we can, I'm hoping that we can set a public hearing pretty quick and move on to our, our public hearing for tonight.
Got a couple more questions on that. Not on that, but on.
Should we motion to postpone so we can have the public hearing on time?
I have questions.
My big concern is I don't want to have fifteen people on staff waiting for us to do a public hearing. But I want to limit, this discussion is specific about this, this particular CIP plan and setting a public hearing for it. And so I don't think that it's our job to go through every project in the CIP to scrutinize the individual project as much as it is, is this plan where it's supposed to be in? Is this doing the public notification function that the CIP is supposed to be doing? So with that.
Page one-twenty-four. The Montman Complex remodel. Do we own the Montman Complex? Okay, so that remodel is going into a capital improvement project. And on page one-twenty-five, affordable housing, five hundred thousand dollars. Anybody explain what that is exactly?
That is a placeholder, if you will. The project will be in the event that funding becomes available and project comes through the Regional Housing Council to use county property and funds to address affordable housing. There's not a specific project identified at this time, but that is there so that we can go forward if one should arise.
Okay, so there's no plan as to specifics or anything like that?
No. Andrew, could you go back to the slide on the role of the planning function in this process, please? Some clarity about that. In respect of. High-level overview, high level, ask questions, and then also host a hearing. Well, I, I have some high-level overview questions and maybe a couple of direct questions. And I don't feel like rushing the process is going to get me happily to that. So I don't know. I just want to register that.
Actually, how much, if, if we continue with this conversation, how, how far can we push this public hearing from seven o'clock into the future? Do we have a time limit on this? When we have to hold the seven o'clock public hearing?
Public hearing, I mean, out of respect for folks that did show up to speak for the public hearing, I, I would prefer.
That we hit the public hearing and we can come back to this? Will staff still be around that we can come back to this, this evening and ask these questions?
Do we have an idea of maybe what, what sections the questions are about? So maybe some staff could go and.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm also happy to, you know, raise the questions and discuss them later. But, well, I had a, a question about the, the, uh, which, you know, the sewer and utilities for Grand Mound. And I also wanted to ask something about facilities and the, there was mention of, sort of, it sounded like maybe an EV charging system or something like that. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about that. And then also I had a question or two about open space facilities. So.
If, I mean, how many, we've got two people here for the public hearing and then maybe just a few online. And so it shouldn't take too long if staff could stick around.
I don't have any about the garbage system. I don't know.
Okay, then, then maybe what we can do is we can ask staff if you are able to hold on for the time that we need to take to hold our public hearing that we're running a little late on. We would appreciate it and if you can come back to this topic. And I think that we'll have plenty, plenty of time to do that this evening, as long as staff does. So if you can stick around, we'd really appreciate it. If not, we'll hit you at our next work session before our public hearing, hopefully. And then.
Getting the commission to suspend the rules to go around our agenda.
Did you make, did, did you make?
You like ones?
I don't know if we actually need to, do we?
Usually to change the agenda order, skipping number seven.
You know, we're not going to skip, it's just going to be late.
That's what I meant, postponing.
Changing the order.
Well, if you'd like, yes, I'd like a, a motion to be flexible with the agenda. All those in favor of having a flexible agenda, say aye. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on this conversation for a bit. If staff can please hold on, we would appreciate it. And we're going to move on real quick to our public hearing on eight-twenty-five, the Update Forest Conversion Ordinance Title. And today, we're here to hold the public hearing on Development Code Docket Item eight-twenty-five, the Forest Conversion Ordinance Code Update. It's a hybrid public meeting. Those wishing to testify have appeared in person or joined by Zoom, phone, emailed in comment or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, for those in person, please sign in. For those on Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option. If you're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. We'll call your name and unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Make sure you also choose the star six to unmute yourself. If you have issues speaking or being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting and call three-six-zero-nine-seven-two-six-seven-eight-five. Each person will have three minutes to testify. I'll call out names for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please unmute yourself and you may turn on your camera to testify. Your time may not be given to another person. When testifying, please provide your name and address for the record. And we'll ask staff to review the timer. Can you tell us how you're going to run the timer today? Zoom, okay, you'll see, you'll see a timer on Zoom with a three-minute countdown. This public hearing is now open and we'll start off with a staff presentation from Andrew, up with, from Planning Manager Ashley Ari.
Thank you. For the record, Ashley Ari, Community Planning Manager. I am filling in for Dana Bowers today. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to attend. She does have family emergencies she's attending to. For that reason, we are not going to be holding a work session. However, at the end of tonight, I am happy to try to gather up questions and additional information you'd like her to look into when she is back. So these updates, originally documented by the Board of County Commissioners, are intended to clarify and simplify code language regarding our forest land conversions, make standards consistent for North County, urban growth areas and other incorporated areas of the county, provide requirements for replanting, create guidelines to incentivize retention of trees, among other effects. Additional information is provided in the memo and online, planning.org. The hearing was noticed on July twenty-sixth in the Olympian, Thurston County's new record. A web mail was sent out on August ninth. Earlier phases of the project also included outreach to and meetings with various stakeholder groups. To date, we have received ten public comments. Two of them were related to you today. Some offer support for the updates and many contain questions, concerns, or offer suggested language changes. A follow-up work session for this item is planned for September twentieth, which will give Dana time to come back and we incorporate some of those suggested. So at this point, I want to turn it over to the public, but I will be here to try to answer as many questions.
Thank you very much. All right, we will start with our public testimony here in the boardroom. And first up, we have Stephen Bernath. Let us know who you are, what area you're from. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Stephen Bernath. I live in Northeast County. I have a lot of experience. Yeah, I retired recently, but I have a lot of experience in forest practices, including actually being responsible for the statewide program the last six and a half years I worked for DNR, as well as being the designated chair of the Forest Practice Board. Over the last thirty years, conversions is always a hot topic for DNR to deal with. I am not representing DNR today. Let me be clear about that. But I did provide you with written comments. I just wanted to highlight a few things and let you know that one of the reasons I'm concerned about conversions in this county is I've seen a lot of trees fall in the last few years to accommodate development or who knows what. For example, the, there's two large harvests down in the south part of the county near the railroad facility. Can't find who permitted it, you know, whatever. Anyway, I'm concerned, particularly in light of climate change and the need to think about carbon sequestration and also with the need for trees to help keep our energy costs down and so forth. And stormwater was mentioned earlier, et cetera. I do want to allow the county for being one of the first local governments to have adopted a conversion ordinance after the ninety-four legislation. And I was part of the two thousands legislation that updated that. I'm really glad that you're updating your ordinances. Couple of specific things, the handoff between the state and county on forest conversions. The tighter you can make that, the better it is for everybody all around. It's no surprises then. You know, DNR doesn't have to deal with local government issues, which convert. local government issues, which conversion is one of those. Homeowners who may end up with a parcel, but with continuing obligations because some less than great developer decided to, okay, I'm gonna harvest this, split it up. And then the homeowner ends up with a moratorium because they didn't go through the conversion process. They end up with reforestation obligations, et cetera. So what, the better we can tighten this up with, for DNR and ecology and the local government, meaning the county, the more successful you will be. I'd also like to point out, I don't see anything about notification in here. I know DNR has got a lot of notification as far as people who want to know what's going on. Oh, thank you. And you really need to consider that also working with tribes. One last thought before I leave, since my time is up, is I didn't see anything in the tree part of the ordinance about Christmas trees. That wasn't included in my comments. And so if you're gonna ask people to have trees on their property, you might think about, and maybe you consider that agricultural practice. And if so, then not. Anyway, I came late to this process. I'm happy to help any way I can. And have a great.
Evening. Thank you for coming in. Up next, we have Timothy Leadingham.
Timothy Leadingham of Olympia. I want to first say that I heard from someone I, I trust that ninety plus percent of what's proposed is quite good. And I endorse it in tree protection. But there's one part that I really can't understand and I, I must give you some alternative recommendations on that conversion action harvest plan. Why is it proposed to go from thirty-five percent in the area? Essentially clear, I mean, nobody's gonna harvest on thirty-five percent and leave any significant amount of trees on thirty-five percent. Or why is it going to eighty percent? So maybe there's some reasons why it needs to increase, but why not fifty percent? And leaves, leave those benefits to the future residents, benefits of forest cover. And I don't really understand why this is being pushed through before we have the forest inventory of, of the county and the forest health, the healthy forest plan and a CIPA analysis. And are, are we considering the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and the desire expressed there for increase of three hundred seventy-five thousand tons per acre per year by twenty fifty? How are we gonna, if? And the other thing is, there's nothing in there that says to what size parcel is the eighty percent cut, can it be applied to? Five acres, twenty acres, hundred acres? I mean, are we gonna clear cut eighty percent of a hundred acre parcel? So that would be what I would prefer you to consider is fifty percent instead of eighty percent. If you don't want to do that, at least limit the eighty percent to a certain small size parcel that maybe correspond to a home site, like one acre or less. I mean, sure, clearing eighty percent of a small parcel. If you don't want to do those two, I would say forward it to the Board of County Commissioners, no recommendation on that, just on that element. And let more people weigh in on this. But there also should be professional review of all harvest plans. And to ensure, among other things, that the trees that that are being left are healthy and are gonna be healthy and be there in fifty years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have anybody online that would like to offer testimony today? All right, well, with that, this public hearing is closed. Oh, oh, we do have someone. Charlotte Pearson, you're up. No, we're looking for Charlotte Pearson, persons.
She was added. She should show up.
Yeah, she. Then, can you hear me?
Dan, thank you.
Great, okay, I'm Charlotte Persons. I'm from Northeast Olympia. And I would like to just say that I'm very pleased that you are keeping in mind the goals of the Thurston County Climate Plan, Mitigation Plan. But I am a little bit concerned that you are not considering them enough. The previous gentleman already mentioned, you know, what happens when we allow cutting of of eighty percent, which is now thirty-five percent on a parcel, that is a problem. The other thing is that it's not clear why you would use different language to designate trees than Tom Water, for example. Tom Water is the first of the three cities that's going to be revising their code. And I urge you to please use the same designations for what is a, a tree you would like to see preserved. The other thing is I think that you, this might come up with the comp plan, but why not go ahead and get started with it now? And that is, we need some way to measure to the, how much we're losing from, from these conversions. And maybe a report on a, on a five-year basis as part of the comp plan. Betsy Norton in her written consentments has a lot about that. But I don't know if you want to use her, her method of, of calculating this, but certainly some method of having, you know, measures for what we're losing and maybe what we're gonna do about if we lose it, lose too much. Finally, I, to talk about a completely different topic, I'd like to talk about weed control. And that is because I noticed in your attachment D of the staff report, staff memo of June seventh, that there was a mention that Clallum County has, requires an invasive species control as part of their, their COHP. And I strongly suggest we do that if we possibly can. I know it's not in this current proposal, but from what my just brief looking at the RCWs, it looks like that's a possible thing to do. And it would be a good thing to do. I'd just like, if I have time, give you a quick anecdote. As you're probably familiar with the Cooper Crest Clearcut, it's actually within the city limits of Olympia. I was talking to Dan Einstein about it and he said that when that was clear cut, there was no Scotch broom. But after it was clear cut, because now the area was no longer shaded, they had to pull out thousands and thousands of, of Scotch broom seedlings and will continue to have to do so. And I expect this is true for some kind of weed in any cutting that you do anywhere in the county. So thank you very much for letting me.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Lynn Fitzhugh.
Hello, can you hear me?
Dan.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Fitzhugh. I live in Olympia. Overall, I'm really thrilled with the improvements that this code represents. I note that in the written notes from the public, some mistakenly refer to old science around trees that believed trees peaked and stopped drawing down and that new trees in rapid growth were drawing down the most. New science shows that the older trees have huge carbon stores released if cut and that they have more girth to store and thus are more efficient at drawdown. For this reason, we are glad that the designations have been created that would incentivize keeping older and bigger trees during construction. I had in written comments suggested that the categories be made to sync up in nomenclature with the rest of the region to prevent confusion. But I see the names are still different, so I hope that change can happen. I would like to say that whether one calls it a heritage tree or a legacy tree, one over forty inches DBH is so rare as to have escaped cutting a hundred years ago that I believe it should have a hundred percent protection. Also, significant trees have gone from starting at six inches DBH to now four inches DBH. I'm not sure why, but it means that a four inch tree receives the same points in this point system as a twenty-three inch tree. I think the inclusion of trees that small actually works against the significant tree category, helping to protect truly significant trees. I would like to remind that a white paper was done by TRPC on trees, pointing out that significant tree loss in the county would undermine significantly the goal numbers set in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. So what we do here is important. Relevant to tonight's discussion of stormwater management, trees indeed act as stormwater managers. Trees, especially evergreens, draw water into the earth will help, which helps to avoid it all running off and creating flooding. And the drawdown helps feed our water aquifers. More reasons to save them under construction. I believe that we can be proud of this proposal.
Thank you very much. I think that's Christie White. Christie, maybe? We're having a hard time getting Christie on.
Muted. She muted?
Yeah. Christie, you're muted.
There we go.
Thank you, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I just wanted to support the comments made by Lynn and your speakers in the room regarding the forest plan that, that you have before you. It's very exciting to see this plan with the protections that are being offered. There's a couple of things that I, I wanted to, to note on page twenty-three. This is the PDF. Excuse me, the actual page number of the document. Section six regarding the, that there's a, a goal for cottage housing. It's, it's sort of a one sentence and I would, I would ask that that be fleshed out and be a little bit more substantial than just a goal. I, I think there could be more done on that level. Then on page twenty-four, that code twenty-six oh five, there's a whole lot of protections that this code supersedes that are listed there. And my hope is, is that we aren't shooting ourselves in the foot and that there aren't more protective measures in those other codes that we're wiping away with this code. I know that's rather detailed, but just a thought there as well. And then on page eighteen, sorry, I'm jumping around here a bit, the categories, that table is really helpful. But I, I think some of those categories could, could also flesh out a little bit more deeper definition so that it helps staff be, be very clear. Also, I'd like to echo about the percentage of cut. Eighty percent, it seems awfully high. And again, going to the example of a, a hundred acre or twenty acre parcel, you take eighty percent and you're, you're just wiping the parcel out. We, we, we see that as I border DNR quite frequently. So those are, again, I, I think this is just such a great opportunity for the county to really preserve trees and, and make, keep our, our county such an emerald green. Also, I'm very pleased to see that, that you all are working it and you're not relying on consultants who don't live here driving how this, this code should be redrafted. So thank you again. Also, it's very hot. I apologize, I'm not there in person, but I would melt in, if I went outside right now. So thank you again.
Thank you very much, Christie. And I thought we had Teresa.
If it's Teresa Parsons on staff with Thurston County Public Works.
I have just Teresa, no last name with their hand up as an attendee.
Is Teresa Jennings?
We can hear you, Teresa.
I live in the urban growth management area out on the eastern portion of the county. And I, I want to express my support for your code revision and I'm very pleased with in, in large part, what you have, your work has been done here. I, I would second, or maybe agree with the comments that have gone forward. I would like to express that many of my neighbors and myself watch with dismay the clear cutting that goes along with development. And we are eager to see something done that helps to preserve the forest as we look forward to an increasing hot weather that impacts the lives of all of us here in this county. I, I personally live in a house that was built in nineteen seventy-eight and the builder at that time was good enough to have left me with major Douglas fir trees surrounding my house. And it is difficult for me to understand why developers cannot build homes that preserve these trees. And so I look forward to more robust code enforcement that retains the forest that we all enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else online that would like to provide testimony tonight? All right, seeing nobody else wishing to testify, this public hearing is now closed. And we are going to work back on our agenda here and go back to our CIP discussions. If staff is still here, we're gonna start these, restart these discussions with Commissioner Wheatley's items first.
Sure. And the first thing I wanted to ask about was the grand. Stuff. Now, we, we talked about Grand Mound a lot earlier. We worked on the plan, the UGA. And at the time, I was concerned that we weren't incorporating this very major part of what it is for the county to manage Grand Mound, the, the water and sewer. what it is for the county to manage Grand Mound, the water and sewer utility. And at that time, I expressed concern that the people living in Grand Mound were going to be more or less stuck with the cost of growth when it comes to building out the sewer and utility system. And I'm seeing that it's a major part of the budget for sewer and utility. And I would like to understand how it breaks out in terms of the funding, because it seems like a lot of it is funded by water and sewer utility rates. So I'd like to know how much, how much of that is going to be on the, you know, at the expense of the people living in Grand Mound now. And then I'd also like to know some of the thinking behind the search for new water sources. You know, in our working on the Grand Mound UGA, historically, the UGA was developed in order to protect the groundwater and the sewer, you know, this utility, it was to pay for this utility was the original reason for creating a UGA in the first place. And now this looks like instead of protecting the groundwater, the search is on for ways to exploit it. So I'm just trying to understand what the plan is there. And, but in particular, I want to understand how much are, how much are the people in Grand Mound have, going to have to be paying for these improvements?
All right, well, good evening, commissioners, and thank you for that question. Joe Plahuta here, Senior Water Resource Engineer with Public Works. So I think I heard two questions there. The first was, how are we looking to pay for growth in the Grand Mound UGA? And then the second question would be regarding source development and why are we pursuing new water sources? So to answer that first question, so that's something we've thought about and we've actually are in the process of completing a study right now to look at our general facility charge. So that's a charge that a new connection to our water and sewer system pays upon connection. The intent of that is to finance all capital work relating to growth. So expansions to the capacity of our wastewater treatment plant, new water sources, things of that nature. The intent of water and sewer rates and fees is to fund capital replacement in the utility. So really, the purpose of the GFC is to segregate out that component of revenue that funds growth and have new growth, new connections to our system pay that piece. So I guess in short, to answer your question, growth will fund growth. And that water and sewer rates and fees call or WSUR acronym in the column for funding, that includes both water and sewer rates that are paid on a monthly basis by the customer base and this general facility charge that's paid upon connection of new customers. And so that latter piece is what will fund all growth-related improvements.
So that, that increases as growth increases? Or, I mean, are people who are living there now going to be paying more at that end of it?
Not on account of growth-related capital projects. People who live there now will pay pay more, you know, as inflation increases the cost of utilities and the cost of construction. But they would only be paying for those improvements to our system that are replacing existing capital assets, not expanding the capacity of our system. Those growth-related expenses would be paid for by that general facility charge.
And then what's the plan with? Could you explain a little bit more about the search for more water?
Sure. So we have a project on our CIP and it's two additional well sources. The purpose of that is simply to provide water supply for growth in the UGA. So as we build out and have new connections, both residential and commercial, we will, over the planning period, require more water. That project is to drill probably two more wells in order to supply that water for future demand in the UGA.
And how significantly would it, like by what percent would that increase the capacity?
In rough terms, you know, it could double it.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. That's it for my Grand Man questions, yes. Now, on the open space and park facilities, well, I did actually have a Grand Man related question on that too. But more broadly, I'm wondering about, you know, it's my understanding that it's sort of like open space and parks and recreation are all wrapped together, right? I mean, it's all sort of one. So could you maybe explain a little more about the open space part of that? And what the plans are there? And then in terms of recreation facilities, I'm wondering if there's much consideration given to equity elements of that, like who's being served by the recreation facilities? Is there a good balance of providing sort of needed facilities for residents in certain areas, just for park space, for green space, for, you know, families and things like that versus sort of the grander plans for, you know, trail connectivity and that kind of thing?
Shannon, do you have any information you could provide on that question?
Yeah, so the first part in terms of the open space, when we, we have the post plan, which is called Parks Open Space and Trails Plan. And that is what covers all of the assets that is owned by the county, which is and there are a lot of open spaces and different types of park systems that the county like maintains and kind of oversees. So that's kind of what we look at in terms of like the the areas that we serve. Currently, there is a study that's being completed by TRPC regarding the, like, regional trail systems. And in the coming years, we are going to be updating our post plan, which is the plan that I was referring to in terms of relooking at those those different park amenities and like where are those areas that we are underserved? One of the areas that we do see is like South County, South West County, which is one of the reasons why we looked into putting in and implementing the a double trail connectivity program for glacial heritage and a trailhead to kind of address that problem.
To address which problem?
The areas that are underserved, we, you know, we see a lot of trails or in park systems along Yalmer near Tenino, you know, Shetland's Western Trails, we have different trailheads. But we do notice that there are some areas in South County, Southwest County that are not served. The other project that we are completing is the the fields near Rochester. There's some park improvements that we are completing there. And I think Rick Thomas can answer more about that project also.
Okay, so there's no, is there any kind of set, like, budgeting of, you know, setting aside for acquisition of more open space or more park space?
Yes.
Budgeting process, okay.
Yes, there is a program, it's called the Park Acquisition Program. And we do have some funding set aside in that to purchase areas.
And does that connect to the Capital Facilities Plan in any, in any way?
Yeah, it's one of the, it's one of the bottom line items. But it is listed on the Capital Facilities Plan or Capital CIP.
And it's called the Parks, Ed Morrison, Thurston County Parks Manager here. It's the Parks Trails and Open Space Acquisition Program on the CIP.
Yeah, because I guess I'm a little bit concerned. I mean, like, when I think about growth and, you know, especially like Grand Man has me thinking about it, but it's not just Grand Man. I mean, there's a desperate need for just park space for families, you know, as development happens. And I guess I'm concerned that the trail connectivity stuff is great, but it doesn't necessarily serve the same function as just having pocket parks and things like that. So that's just.
Can I jump in for a second?
Yeah.
Ed, last year, when we were talking about this stuff, we anecdote, or we just mentioned that if we had a wish list, putting a playground down in South County would be a fantastic thing. And I know that the county doesn't actually operate very many playgrounds. I think we have one out of Burfoot and one at Kennydale. But we don't really have a whole lot of, like, playground playgrounds. And down south, that's kind of a younger community down there of any place in the county that we could really use a playground. We'd love, I would love to see one down there.
Yeah.
I don't know if that can be put on your list somewhere or fit in somehow, but I'd love to see it. Ms. Campbell, did you have something?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to add that we do set aside money for parks should the opportunity arise. And the board is very aware that South County is underserved by parks and who wouldn't love a playground? But I would say that what you're looking at is the Capital Facility Plan, the acquisition of land and construction of our facilities. What this plan does not include, and our biggest challenge when it comes to parks, is operating costs. So while we do set aside funding for parks, if we expand our park system, we have to find ways to operate and maintain them. And we currently don't have enough staffing and funding to take care of what we have at a very minimal level. We're maintaining our parks. So should the planning commission have ideas about where funding might come from, the Board of County Commissioners is constantly looking for ways to fund our parks. So just bear in mind that when you look at the Capital Facility Plan, we are looking for what we need to build out to address the needs of a growing community. But we also need to be mindful of the operating costs, and we don't necessarily have the funding for that.
Commissioner Wheatley, do you have more?
Well, I mean, I guess I just have a thought that it may be a matter of finding funding for parks that people need. But also, it's a matter of prioritization as well. Not, I mean, yeah, anyway, that's editorial comment.
Yeah, go ahead. Chris, you're passing her.
I have a funding source.
For parks?
I propose a one thousand dollar fee for every tree that gets cut down for development.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Commissioner Day.
When we think about, I mean, this is probably a little bit out of scope, but how big of a problem is that operations and maintenance costs across the board, we look at everything that's related to a capital plan?
I'd say that, as you know, there's dedicated funding for maintaining our road system. We have fees that are collected for stormwater. We have dedicated funding for our solid waste, the tipping fees come in, that's very healthy fund. It's the functions that rely on the general fund, like parks and capital facilities that the county owns and uses, where it is a stretch and we're struggling for how to maintain them. There are, of course, you know, there's never enough money to fund any sector of government. But the biggest concerns come when we're talking about the general fund, because there are so many competing priorities for general fundment.
Are you unable to tap into REIT two for any kind of operational?
Yes, actually, we are. We have to be able, the law does allow for a portion of REIT to be used for AMNO. But to do that, you have to be able to show that all projects on your CIP are fully funded. The county has not been able to do that at this time, so that prohibits us. And then even if we were able to do that, there are some pretty onerous reporting requirements that go along with that, and we hesitate to take the admin burden. But really, it's the requirement that all projects are funded. They're not fully funded.
Commissioner Halverson.
Yeah. Ed, this is Barry Halverson out Lake Lawrence Way. Have you given, or has Public Works or your department given any consideration to a volunteer program?
Yeah, we're always interested in having conversation about volunteer programs, being mindful of our own budgetary constraints. We'll listen, and if we're able to come to an agreement on volunteer forces or services, then we're always open ears.
Well, you get my services for free and have for the last ten years. But I think that's a good program that you might look at doing something with, because, I mean, the LMD out of Lake Lawrence takes care of your fifteen acre county park. We do all the cleanup out there every week. And we don't ask you for anything. We don't ask you for crash bags, grippers, or nothing, so.
Well, and Barry, thank you for that. We definitely appreciate any help that we can get. And we do have a couple of assorted volunteer groups, such as the Boston Harbor Association, that they do work out at Burfoot Park. Establishing a good volunteer program and keeping them active, if you will, is quite often the biggest challenge. It's very appealing at first, and then once it becomes work, they tend to tail off. So that's been one of the biggest challenges for us with volunteer groups.
We also have recently joined forces, if you will, with the PARC. Do you remember, Ed, what PARC stands for? P-A-R-C, they're the
I wanted to say that it's Parks Arts and Recreation Committee?
Yeah, that sounds right. So they came and made a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners saying that they were willing to help us find ways to support the parks for a fee, of course. So the fee wasn't bad, so we paid it. We're seeing where that goes to, looking for any way we can to support the parks in the county.
Okay. I'm back to Commissioner Day.
I think, I think one general kind of comment that I have is, and I, I work in the government, so I understand this. Like, this feels like a really sizable process. Like, each division has its own plans. I think, I know specifically, like, in county is struggling with that right now, and they're making big entreaties, even like legislature for, like, how do we actually break some of these silos at the state level so that we can get work done in these kind of multi-benefit ways at the county level? And that's just the one thing that strikes me about this, and it's probably, it's a historical artifact. It's the way most governments do their business. I understand it. But I think there are opportunities here. Like, I think specifically, like, we're talking about, we have, we have maintenance and operations capacity with stormwater fees. We could have a stormwater park.
Yep.
Those, that kind of thinking, I think, could help maybe solve some of these. I know that creates its own, not my department issue. I do know of some, yeah, I do know of some grant funds coming available soon for the, for design for stormwater parks, so.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was alluding to earlier with, you know, sort of innovative funding for stormwater. Yeah, that's kind of what I was alluding to earlier with the, you know, sort of innovative funding for stormwater. Um, and it's mostly for retrofit stuff, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and another, I mean, to follow on to that, I mean, another siloing problem is. I mean, now that uh, the legislature has asked jurisdictions to think about their green infrastructure. And incorporate it, I think that's one of the ways that the siloing can, can be got at. Um, because when you talk about the cost of facilities and operations, well, if, if you have green infrastructure. That helps mitigate stormwater. Um, that recharges the groundwater, et cetera. Um, that helps to, in, you know, trees are the obvious one, you know, they help to enhance, keep temperatures down. And enhance local health. Uh, good to have parks with trees, especially in areas that are getting more urbanized, et cetera. I mean, there's this problem of not counting the value of that and how much that can save. I mean, maybe you don't have to create a new pump station if you put in green infrastructure instead or something like that. So, I mean, there's a lot of new thinking to do about, about that process. It's not going to happen this year.
I was actually impressed by the number of.
Yeah.
Green infrastructure BMPs that are listed in here. So I think, I think staff should get some credit for that one too.
Does anybody else have any questions on CIP for staff?
Well, I just had one more and it's more. Just curiosity, you know, again, thinking about the future, which is kind of what planning commissions get to do. Um, on the um, just the uh, and I'm sorry I didn't read deeply into this. But on the, just the ca- the county facilities, like I heard mention of um, you know, building out. Um, it sounded like helping to build out EV stations or something maybe in the rural county. And I can see the value of that obviously because it's a way to encourage adoption. But I'm wondering if that's being balanced against um. Uh, the focus on, on um, decarbonizing county, the county transportation. And you know, other ways of, you know, like getting an electric fleet, et cetera, et cetera. Like is that, in your opinion, is that having adequate funding? Um, the, the process of uh, converting county facilities themselves.
Jason Ash, Facilities Manager here. So hopefully I can answer your question. Um, the purpose of this project in the, as you see, we have money up front in the coming years is. Is to put it towards electrifying the county fleet. That is the priority that we are looking at. Uh, we put money in the outlying years, looking at, in case we did come across some grant funding or something to look at. Charging stations for the public. Um, we're working with the county commissioners. Robin may have more to say on that. But we're going to them with the policy, the. On public use of county chargers and whatnot. But the, the main focus of this project is towards electrifying the fleet for the county vehicles.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Right, and, and supporting the electrified fleet because other than the sheriff's. Uh, vehicles and the large rolling stock in Public Works. Um, fairly high percentage of our fleet is already electric vehicles. Um, we're just making sure that there's charging stations at our buildings. Um, like we're installing a EV charging station at this building. That project is in process, um, but we need to know that they're out there to support the fleet because we are converting. And even for the large rolling stock, um, we're seeing uh, vehicles becoming available. Uh, that may need, that meet the needs of our department, so we're definitely working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Does anybody else have any questions for staff or for? Well, with that, I'm hoping that somebody would consider uh, thinking about this public hearing. And if there was some suggested language.
Do you like me to make a motion? Oh, I didn't need that. Okay. Uh, moved to set a public hearing on the amendments to Appendix G of Thurston County Confidential Plan. The two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-nine Capital Improvement Program. Repealing and replacing the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program in its entirety.
It's a little bit different, but the same. It's been moved and seconded to set a public hearing on the capital facilities plan for September twentieth. September twentieth at seven PM or assumed thereafter is available. Call for the vote.
Hi.
Mr. Nelson. Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Vice Chair Day.
Hi.
Chair Casino.
Hi, we're missing.
Mr. Pastinger.
Hi.
That is unanimous. We have a public hearing set for September twentieth, twenty twenty-three on the CIP. We appreciate the staff hanging around and answering all our questions and you too, Ms. Campbell. Um, looking forward to that. Do you know if we will be having any other work sessions on CIP? After the public hearing or any scheduled?
We'll have one immediately following.
One immediately following and then as needed if we have to, but.
Yes.
Pretty tight timeline.
Yeah, generally in, in the last five years, it's pretty much been except for maybe one year where there's a late addition. Um, immediately following the public hearing, there's the follow-up work session where any remaining conversations are dealt with. And then the recommendation follows because chair is such a rigid timeline that we must have it adopted by the end of this year.
Yeah. Thank you, Andrew. All right, well, with that, we're going to move on in our agenda to what was item number five, which is staff updates. And Ashley, do you have any updates for us today other than your own?
Well, I am really excited. I didn't want to delay moving into the um. The items that we have beyond the agenda tonight, but I do want to say, I look forward to working with you all and seeing you even more in the future. Not just related to act projects. Lucky you. Um, in terms of just general updates though, um, I did want to let you know that there is the. Um, Lacey Joint Plan um, Work Session coming up next week. The goal is to try to get through that next week. So that we can cancel that August thirtieth meeting. We do want to keep it on the books because scheduling any type of joint work sessions is a really difficult. Process, um, but fingers crossed. Um, and then we also don't have anything currently scheduled for September sixth, so it might be a nice break for y'all if the Lacey Joint Plan. Goes well next week.
Are you suggesting that we don't have a September sixth meeting?
We could just get together for fun, but yeah, there's nothing scheduled right now.
Oh, okay. Well, let's, let's not talk too much about that.
Yeah. We're holding it just in case. Um, and so we've got uh, other things coming up, just so they're on your radar. Items that you have looked at. Next week is a busy week on August twenty-third. If you happen to want to join in. There's a two PM briefing on the agriculture zoning update with board. Right after that, there's the poke briefing. Um, and then at three thirty, we have a wireless briefing. Um, and then August twenty-fourth, there's a public hearing follow-up briefing on the Olympia Joint Plan Update with the board. So next week's going to be busy. Um, if you want us to send those out to you in writing, we can do that as well if you're interested. Um, and otherwise, yeah, no other staff updates. I did want to, if, if you do want to, I guess, continue the, continue a conversation. About the forest lands conversion, just if you have any guidance on questions or comments you wanted Dana to follow up on, I would be happy to take those.
So now you have a vacancy in community planning.
You're vacant too. Well, yes, we'll have, we have, yeah, we have to.
So it's the, are you still doing the ag?
I'm still doing ag for now. So you.
So hard to.
Oh, yeah, no, no. I've already told the ag advisory committee members I'm going to be back in September. Um, yeah, so I'm doing act for now.
I, I think it probably appropriate to say to you that um, we really appreciate, we're very glad to have you. And on top of that, we really appreciate that Jeremy Davis was able to step in uh, during this interim. I think he did a really good job. Um, he's a great guy and a great planner and an asset to the county. And with that, I think that Ashley's got.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yes.
I did bring a little card. I know that you're probably sad that he's not the one staying on, but I wanted you to have an opportunity to share that with him personally. Um, it's just a little thank you. Um, he was doing the community planning manager job on top of his other job as the operations manager. And so I thought this would just be a nice way to show our appreciation.
So when our meeting closes, if you guys want to get together with Ashley and sign that card, that would be fantastic. With that, we're going to move on to, um, go ahead.
You wanted questions on forest conversion now?
If, if this is an appropriate time.
I, I don't want to call out any specific ones, but I would just broadly say that I agreed with at least seventy-five percent of the public comments. And would like to know staff's sort of position relative to all of those comments. Um, and. The uh, it's probably odd, but is even Branath available to consult to you on that? He seems very knowledgeable.
Very knowledgeable. Um, he and Steph has met with him. Um, and yes, we will be working with him. He also just knows a lot of people at DNR. Um, we have reached out to DNR. I know I've spoken with him personally, Dana has as well. But it is really hard to navigate who is the person that can give you the best information on this particular thing. And so Stephen has said he could help us with that, which would be great.
That's fantastic. Anymore. All right, everybody looking at their calendar, this uh, August twenty-third joint plan uh, with the city of Lacey is our first. And hopefully most important and only one that we could do so. I'm really hoping everybody can be there. Is there anybody that doesn't think they can make the twenty-third meeting? All right, we're going to plan for a full house. I don't know about Commissioner, Commissioner Hanson said that he is still a maybe on that, isn't he?
I'm looking to you, Tasha. I'm not aware.
We should have a, a quorum anyways. And then if we need the August thirtieth. Um, is there anybody that would probably miss that? So we would be on a razor's edge, so let's really hope we can get everything done on the one third.
And that will be a joint presentation because this is on an accelerated timeline.
Yeah.
Um, you know, Lacey will probably be taking a, a more prominent role in that presentation since there are pieces that they have been managing.
Yeah.
On their own.
And then um, I don't know if we need to do anything about our September, our first September meeting. But if that, if that calendar stays pretty open or close enough to pretty open, we can just keep it open and not do September. Is there anybody here that would really feel bad about missing a meeting in September?
I'd feel really good about it.
Yeah, something comes up though, that you can push off till, you know, mid-September instead, that would be fantastic. But uh, a little break, especially after three for joint plan uh, would be great. All right, uh, with that, does anybody have anything for the good of the order?
Question.
Yeah.
Uh, it seems Commissioner Hanson has missed a fair number of meetings. Can you, is it worth looking into what sort of the attendance requirements are? And what the number of meetings missed?
We could certainly take that into consideration and uh, I will reach out to him personally as well. All right. Is there any other thing for the good of the order? With having no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.